Randy Gilman, Assistant Superintendent, Elementary.
Tammy Cardona, Assistant Superintendent, Secondary.
My next. Jim Shaloo, Director.
Crystal Hargis, Director.
Bob Grunewell, Director.
Jamie Willis, Board Secretary.
John Stewart, Chief Financial Officer.
Declan Fitzpatrick, Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Kelly Barak, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Michelle Chamberlain, Board Member.
Judy Smith, Board Vice President.
Nisha Patel, Superintendent.
And I'm Vicki Hanson, Board President. And Carol Yant is on Zoom. I apologize. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight, and I'd like to say a special thanks to Mr. Barbregallo and the staff who figured out exactly the number of people we can have in the audience, and they're spaced appropriately. So now we know when we're in this level, we can have 50 people in the audience. And I'd like to thank you. That took a little while to figure that out. All right. First item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes from August 18th and 25th.
I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
The next item is approval of the agenda for tonight, September 15th.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Communications, 3.1 Patron Comments. Mr. Gilman.
No comments this evening.
All right. Next item is Superintendent's Comments.
Okay. Well, first, I have a few things. I'm gonna have some slides I'm just gonna go over. But before that, I would like to take this opportunity to present a plaque. And do I, do I, I have the plaque? Vicki, you already have the plaque. So I am going to present the plaque to you that you already have. So please keep it with you. So congratulations, Vicki. Vicki is going to get a plaque for being an advanced board member. And she should have gotten that at a conference that was supposed to be scheduled in June, but it became virtual. And so I was supposed to present it to her. So there you go. So congratulations for being, getting the status of being an advanced board member. So that's, that is great job. So congratulations, Ms. Hanson. Thank you. Next, I do want to thank all of our students. We are actually gonna be on our third Wednesday tomorrow. And our students have been phenomenal in terms of just, we've asked a lot for them. And I know I thank everybody, but I have not had a chance to truly thank the students. They wear, you know, asking our kids to wear masks all day long is, it is a lot. And I know that our little kids have been doing a great job. And when I look out in the audience, I could see Sophia out there, and she has that mask on, and she's doing a wonderful job with that. So I'm just so proud of everybody, and I just want to thank all of our kids for doing everything right. And we've had no issues with our students, so I'm so proud of all of you guys for doing that. And then next, I want to go through a few slides. JP, if you could pull that up real quick. As you know, we are right now in the hybrid status, and we have been on that for the past few weeks. And going through some slides, I, I, go ahead and click on that. I'm gonna give you just some updates on the numbers, like I do every time. This is the latest information, and it will be public tomorrow on the Jefferson County Health Department website. And this is the latest, as you can see, on week 26, on the very right, my right. Your guys' yeah, right. There has been a drop from the last one, which was at 372 cases. We're down to 311. That is your weekly COVID case count. Then the next slide, this is your seven-day rolling average. Again, you want to look at the solid line. That's the one that you want to look at. The dots are just the daily spikes, and that just fluctuates frequently. So again, you'll see a drop there. Your positivity rate has also, the good news, good news is it has declined a little bit. Not a lot, but it has gone down to about a little over 11%. This is the data that we show by zip code. Again, everything highlighted in yellow is Fox School District attendance. This is by age group. As you can see, our 14 to 19 age group is the one that we continue to see a lot of students with the number of cases. We are starting to see a little bit more in the 11 to 13 age group. But again, this is countywide. This is a new slide that I am sharing, and we got this from the St. Louis County Health Task Force. But this includes the entire region and the state. It's hard to see, but this basically is the transmission rate. So Missouri, right now, for the state is at a .95. Ideally, transmission rate, you want to be below one. If you're below one, that means the virus is not spreading as much. If you're above one, that means the virus is spreading a lot. And for the state of Missouri, right now, there's 38 states that are higher than us, and there's 12 states that are lower than us. About a week ago, there were about only 20 states that are higher, that were higher than us. So we're getting better and better as a state. Our transmission rate is dropping, which is a good thing. And then on the next slide, this is a different view of looking at the same thing, which I thought was really good. If you look at March, and then it goes all the way at the bottom to now. In March, look at our transmission rate. It was all the way above, it was over 2.5. And then you go down, and that's when we did shelter in place at the very bottom. And you see it dipped down below one, and then you come all the way to the right, and that's where we are right now, .95. So it's getting much better. So we look at all of the county and state data when we make decisions for Fox C6. But as I've always said, we also look at our own district data. So one of the things that NEA recently did last week is they sent out a survey to their bargaining unit they represent. And one of the things that came out clearly was that the district wants to see, our staff wants to see the data that our district has. And I want to be very clear. That was always our intent, was to share. Yes, we have positive cases. Yes, we have quarantines, and yes, we send out emails to those individuals. But we're not trying to hide anything. What we were doing is we were trying to build a site on the website that we could publish. It's just taking us a little bit longer than we thought. So our plan all along was to try to develop it and put it on our website that we're gonna share today. And actually, it has been built, and I'm gonna walk you through it, and you can find this on our website. And if you can click on it, JP. So at any point, you can go to this website, and you can find all of our district information on it. And just like how some other districts send out an email that was also put in the survey results that we got, like why can't Fox C6 do just like some of the other districts do? They send out an email at the end of the day. Well, guess what? This is even better than that. We don't, not only send out an email, this is refreshed almost every five minutes. So it's live data for you. If you can see, there's a tab for students, and there's a tab for staff. The students piece, you could see there's current positive students, and it's split up by building. You can see how many positive students we have, how many students recovered, how many students currently in quarantine, and how many students have been released from quarantine. And then at the very bottom, the total number of students. So right now, in the district, we have 23 positive students, 19 recovered, 239 that are in quarantine currently in the district. If you want to drill it down by building, you've got that as well. Then if you click on the staff, same thing, if you go all the way to the bottom, right now, we have six total staff members in the district that are positive, and then 32 staff members that are currently in quarantine.
Now.
Is this like your totals down here, is that daily, or is that from a certain point? Like if they, like at this moment, there are six staff members that are testing positive. So tomorrow, if some of those test negative, that number would change?
So currently, yeah, go ahead, JP. Yeah, that's fine. Because this is all, by the way, this is all calculated from nurses who are entering the data on their spreadsheets from the buildings, and then it populates into this.
We've been developing, is this on? Developing a system with the nursing staff. They all have their own data trackers that as students, if they're placed in quarantine for close contact, they're labeled as currently in quarantine. If that student tests positive and reports that to us, then their status is switched. And then, so these are live totals. So if one of those staff members is released from isolation tomorrow, they're recovered, they're back to work, that number drops down to five, the recovered jumps up to eight. So it's a live updating.
I just, I felt like some of the Jefferson County stuff was like they were tracking, this is how many we've had, and it's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And so this is, as they go out, the number changes as they.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Because I think it's, it's really beneficial for us to see what's going on right now, not what happened six months ago.
Right.
Right, thank you.
It's almost, it's live every five minutes. So this is now on our website, so anytime anybody wants to go see, they can look at that. So we thought it was important, again, it's transparency, and we've been planning to have it. We've just, it's just taken us some time to get to this point. And the reason it's taken us some time is because we still had to work out the kinks on the actual building data systems, you know, in order, and until we had that refined, we couldn't build a district-wide one. So, and remember, we've only been doing this for two weeks, although it feels like we've been doing it for a while. It's only been two weeks. So it does take a little bit of time. So you have that. And then also, another thing that came out in the survey that I do want to talk about and just mention, one of the questions that came out that has been weighing heavily on me was, one of the questions was asked, how overwhelmed and stressed do you feel with your job expectations out of 10? The elementary level came out to be a 7.4, and the secondary number came out to be an 8.3 from our teachers. These were about 515 people responded to this survey. When I look at that number as a superintendent, of course, it weighs heavily on me. I realize that this is hard. I am not pretending this is not hard. I am not pretending that this is easy. I acknowledge everything that everybody's doing. We all acknowledge it. We thank you. If there was an easier solution, please know that we would do it. If it was easy to go all virtual, we would do that. But we know that there's so many things that we have to think about. There's so many different perspectives. Every decision we make, we think through it, we discuss it, we talk about it. But there just is not something that, I wish there was a button that we could push and make it easy and make an answer for everybody. But right now, there isn't, and I truly believe if we just stay the course, we can get through this. We will weather the storm. I know that we're, we were in red, but here's the good news, guys. We're in orange right now. We are in orange. So my point being, this is going to ebb and flow, just like everything else. So if we had gone to virtual this week, just because we were in red, we would now be making an announcement that we were in hybrid. We can, our, our whole point was to stay with one thing and continue to look at the data and try to stay consistent, so that our students and our staff are not continuously going and fluctuating, right? So we, we're gonna try and stay the course and weather this, and we're gonna try and support all of our teachers, because we know you're in the trenches. We're gonna try and take as much off of your plates as you can, and you're gonna be getting information from your principals every day. I know Dr. Cardona's meeting with the principals tomorrow. I know Dr. Gilman spoke to the principals tomorrow. You're gonna be getting information about what else we can take off of your plate, and there's gonna be a lot. So please, just stay with us on this. Know that we're here to support you. And yes, I know I read every single comment in your surveys. Trust me, I read every single one of them. I take it to heart, and we will continue to get better from it. And yes, I do, I am positive, and I will continue to be positive. So I am gonna end my superintendent comments with a couple of emails that we got. The first one, and I want the teachers to really listen to this. This one said, hello, I just wanted to send an email and tell you that we are loving virtual schooling. Because I, and I'm reading this because I don't think our teachers hear enough of this. Our virtual teacher has been amazing, and we are so happy with how it is being handled. We have bumps in the road, but they are handled quickly. We are very glad we chose this option. Thank you so much for continually making well-educated and informed decisions. You teachers are doing amazing. And the other one says, hi, everyone, my son just came out of a Zoom meeting with the biggest smile. He said, Mom, I love all of my teachers so much that I can't even pick out a favorite. Even though it's been a crazy start, my kids are doing great with virtual learning. I just wanted to say thank you, and we appreciate all of the teachers and all of the hard work they do. So thank you to the teachers for working so hard and working diligently for our kids. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Tomorrow is unofficially Orange Day, so I'm gonna wear my orange tie. If you guys have orange stuff, go ahead and wear that. I want to piggyback a little bit on what Dr. Patel said. I've been in several buildings, got to some last week, socially distanced, of course, and having the kids in the building is just so energizing, and they're so happy to be there, and they are doing a fantastic job wearing the masks. I was at Fox Elementary, I was walking down the hallway, and came around the corner, that building kind of, kind of swerves. And there's a little building blocks friend that was waiting to use the restroom there, and she said, hi there! And I was like, oh, hi. And I was, you know, what's your name? Savannah. Like, well, how's your day going, Savannah? She goes, it's nap time! And she was just so excited about nap time, which I can totally appreciate. I also wanted to share about a couple of awesome kiddos from Sherwood, Sidney, and Liam. They actually created a lemonade stand, and they raised $224, and they donated that to Brendan's backpacks. So just, I really honestly wanted to thank Dr. Patel. I want to thank all of you on the school board and our staff for providing, you know, support around the plan that offered students an opportunity to be in person in school. It's really, really awesome. And it's just been, like I said, so energizing to see the kids and interact with them, and they're doing great. And that's all I had.
So I have a few things tonight. First off, I had my first meeting, Zoom meeting, with the Parent and Student Summit Committee, and the decision was made that we would need to do that virtually this year. But one of the things that we're gonna focus on is we're gonna be setting up a website that will go live in March for all-around social-emotional learning for our students. You know, that's something we really want to make sure that we hit hard this year with everything that's going on, because we know that it does impact our students, and it is affecting them. And we are going to offer some videos for parents, and really, those are gonna be pretty targeted around filling out the Fast File, how to fill out things for scholarships, and just things that we know that parents will use from year to year. So that's gonna really be our focus this year as we move towards that. The secondary levels just finished up their virtual open house, and I was able to actually sit in on a couple of those, and it went really, really well, right? I think we're all, I know myself, I would rather, when I do a video, it's always just me speaking, but you're not gonna see my video. And so I know it really takes people out of their comfort zone, but I got some really great emails from parents about how much they liked it, especially at the secondary level. They didn't have to wait in line to go see the teachers they wanted to see, right? They were very accessible. So that was a plus. Tomorrow, it starts our flu shots, so we are gonna act, they are gonna actually be in Antonia Elementary, Antonia Middle School, Clyde Hamrick and Simpson, starting off tomorrow. So those clinics will be happening every Wednesday now till we get everybody. And we are able to offer that for all of our staff, full-time, and, you know, any staff that we have. So proud to have that starting tomorrow. And then I just want to also give a shout out Gina Buhner, and many of you know her, but she has, her session for the MSBA Conference has been accepted. So she will be doing a session in December around social-emotional learning and all of that. And then I have a session that I will be offering virtually in March. So everything is virtual. So I will be doing one around how we bring our parents and students together for our parent summit. So, thank you.
I'll tell you, this has been an experience, I've been actually experiencing this from the parent perspective. And I can tell you, learning how to do virtual, work, work in the virtual world has been really a challenge for me. Truth is, this has been, we're expecting almost the impossible out of our teachers and out of our parents, folks. But here's the thing, we're going into the third week, and the truth is, it's getting better. It's getting better and better, and I hope our teachers understand that all we expect of them is to do their best. And the truth is, that'll be good enough, and it's getting better all the time. I've got to admit, I've been frustrated a few times trying to make the things work and all the, the different applications work. But I'll tell you something, there's a lot of cool stuff that we have available for our kids that, this may turn out to be an opportunity for us to do some things that we never thought we could do that could help our kids become even better learners. And so I'm hoping that in the end, when we come through this, we may come out stronger and better relative to how well we can deliver instruction to our kids and help them achieve with learning. But anyway, the other thing, just one other thing, folks, these masks make a difference. And we, I know, frankly, my little kindergarten, first grader loves wearing his masks to school. It's fun for him. It seems like the kids are doing okay with it. The thing that we have to cautious against, we're turning the curve now in the, in the community. This is, this requires a community effort. This is something that we have to do as a community, not just as a school. We have to stop the transmission of this disease, and there's a way to do it. It's by wearing masks. And if we just accept that and embrace that, because I think we're gonna have to do this for a while. But we have the ability to control this if we decide to do it. And so I encourage us all to stay, continue our work with the masks with fidelity, and we can beat this virus. It's gotta have a host, and if we take the host away, we win. And so please, please encourage your, your families to wear the mask when they're out in public, when they're in situations where there's the potential for transmission. I'm not gonna say anything else, sorry.
I just did all what Jim said. I just want to take my time to thank all the teachers. I know that you've been under immense stress, and we all feel for you. We expected you to build a plane midair. And you all have just shined, and we just greatly appreciate everything that you're doing for our students. You always step up to the plate, though. In my last 30 years in this district, you always were there, and you always are concerned about the student's success. My, I'm actually virtual schooling three of my grandchildren. They attend Sherwood. And the experience that I watch with them every day, the growth. They're becoming strong, independent learners. They are learning to persevere and not give up. And these are all things that we want to see in our students, and I'm watching this every day. And I cannot thank the teachers enough that I am working with. They are doing a phenomenal job with the virtual, and I greatly, greatly appreciate it. So, and that, just thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart to all the teachers in this district. You are awesome, and we appreciate you.
I'd just follow up on that a little bit. I have a daughter who's head of guidance at Fox High School, and was heavily involved putting schedules and virtual and all that together. And she sent me a picture of the room that the principals and the counselors were working from, and she titled it "The War Room," because there was papers scattered all over, and they'd thrown this away and got this out, and were gonna do this. And so it was a true effort to make that work. I've got two grandkids in school. They love it. It seemed to work well for them. So it's been a positive thing for, for them for sure.
Yes, I would like to take a moment to say thank you to our Transportation Department, our Food Service Department, and our Custodial and Maintenance Department for a great start to a challenging year. If complaints from those departments arising to my level are any indication, this is a stellar year, because I think I may have had one. So I just want to say thank you to all those staff for, for making this challenging year a good start. And, and I look forward to a great rest of the year. I also want to just make sure that everybody's aware, I know we put it out on the website and in communications, but we were approved, starting on September the 8th, by the USDA to provide free breakfast and lunch for all students of the Fox C6 School District, whether they're virtual, in-person, free, reduced, full pay. Any student in our district can get a free breakfast and a free lunch every day. So congratulations to Gail and her department on, on getting that applied for and approved. Thank you.
I have no report.
I have no report. I just want to piggyback, piggyback on what everyone else said about the teachers and, and how hard they are working. And it is, as a teacher myself, with the younger ones, I know how Zoom meetings are, especially in like second grade or younger, and they can be very entertaining and very, they can go bad really quick. And thank you for being patient. Thank you for trying things that you've never tried before. Thank you, most importantly, for just loving our kids, and then also helping our parents who are trying to teach from home with all the technology that they're not used to. So parents, just hang in there, please. We'll get through this together. And then the students, thank you for listening to your teachers, following the guidelines of the masks. I have two kids who are in the high school, and I appreciate secondary teachers very much. I participated in the open house and had two Zoom meetings with teachers, and they went great. And I got that one-on-one, so I felt, I felt like I, it was very beneficial. But just continue to support each other. If you have any, if you need help, ask your principal, ask administration, ask each other. So let's get through this together. Thank you.
I just also want to say thank you to the teachers. A day doesn't go by that somebody from a school doesn't tell me of a way they've adapted, or adopted, or changed, or reinvented something they're doing to make it better. Or as a team, as a grade level, something they've figured out. And as time goes on, everybody's gonna continue to do that. And, and we as a board so appreciate the time and effort that you all are putting in. The principals, the teachers, the cooks, the, everybody, the nurses, the secretaries. We really do appreciate it, and the kids are so thankful to be back in school. And I just really appreciate how ingenuous, what ingenuity the teachers do have, and how they really think above and beyond, and how to solve problems, and how to make things work. And so, thank you very much.
Okay, I just wanted to make a couple comments. The first is, you know, we get a lot of emails and, from parents and people in the community, and sometimes staff as well, and we appreciate getting those emails. But to try to piggyback on what Mr. Shaloo said, really what we all want is to be back at school five days a week, full-time. That's really what we want to happen. And in order for that to happen, we have to wear the mask. And so we're not doing that to be mean or cruel. We, we want to help the incident rate go down throughout the community so that we can come back to school. And we'd all love to be it sooner rather than later. So I would just. So I would just encourage everybody to please, please be patient with us. And as far as the stress level of the staff, I am working with granddaughters too, not in the school district. And the thing that I would say is, all the technology is a tool, but be easy on yourself, parents and teachers. Don't think you have to do it all at once. Take one that you know how to use, one platform, one program, work it into your day, and then add another one, and inevitably, something's not going to work. I know I was trying to help a granddaughter video herself, and we couldn't get it to upload. After we did it a couple times and we got the video right, we couldn't get it upload, to upload to send to the teacher. And you just have to say, well, we've got it, we'll try again later, get some more help, and you just have to go on. And then that's that perseverance. The other thing that I would like to say is, the board did receive a letter from an administrator, a principal in one of the buildings, talking about their staff. And I would like to take a moment and read that letter, and I think this letter isn't just about the staff at that building. I think you could contact any principal at any of the buildings, and they would be able to say the same thing about how their staff have risen to the occasion and worked together to make it work for the kids. So if, if you'll bear with me, "Dear Fox C-6 School Board and Administration Team," I am going to take this off, you're all far away from me. "I'm going to apologize for the lengthiness of this letter from the beginning, but I do ask that you read it all the way through. For many years, I have believed that Londell has the most amazing, amazing staff, and I realize I haven't been the principal at any other building. So when faced with this crazy pandemic, several teachers and I looked past the chaos and found a way to take care of all our students. They, people quickly shifted from teacher to learner and absorbed every bit of online virtual teaching they could find. They met at each other's homes, shared websites, zoomed each other in order to help each other understand how the new technologies worked, all while enjoying their summer break. I've never seen such leadership among staff. Never once did they complain, whine, or state the obvious. We are not contracted to be working right now. They diligently work to prepare for a year that you can't really prepare for. When we did come back together to meet, we were masked and intently listening to the requirements and expectation of the upcoming year, and there were a lot. Along with wiping noses, tying shoes, feeding breakfast, and teaching mask-wearing skills like superheroes, they are also covering the curriculum and standards and meeting social emotional needs of whoever walks through the door. They are running from one class to the other to help with technology glitches and taking their virtual Zoom classes with them as they go. Always a teachable moment. I tell you this because I realize preparing for this crazy year has been one of the most unenjoyable experiences of my career, but it has revealed who the staff are to their very core. They are amazing, caring, and powerful people. As if things weren't crazy enough, we have one, and this was at the start of the year in August, we have one staff member who had just tested positive for COVID and had accidentally exposed six other staff people before she experienced any symptoms. So they had to be quarantined right at the start of the school year. To prevent students and parents from walking in the first day and seeing an unfamiliar substitute that doesn't know Londell or our ways, the staff shifted into other positions. We had a librarian covering a fifth-grade staff, a special ed teacher assistant covering the special ed staff, class, and the special ed teacher covering for another special ed class. Everybody switched up to make it work. It wasn't about having enough subs. It was about teachers willing to go way outside their comfort zone to take care of each other and the kids. Has it been easy to prepare for all those switches? No. But again, not one complaint, not one eye roll. As a principal for over 20 years, I feel like there isn't that much that surprises me anymore, but the 2020 pandemic has done just that. I am blown away at the amazing selflessness of my Londell staff. They have comforted parents, each other, students, and me. My love for them has grown tremendously. A month ago, I was trying to figure out how to retire a year earlier and not have to deal with this. Today, I'm blessed to be witness to and to be a small part of experiencing this amazing group of individuals who work as one family, united to make the best of whatever is thrown at them. I want to publicly and officially thank the entire Londell staff from the bottom of my heart. And, and I just want to say, that's really how it is for us with all of the staff and all of the schools. And again, I think all of the principals could say the same thing. So thank you, and just be good to yourself. Be kind to yourself, and don't, if you get really stressed, take a brain break, just like the kids do. Give yourself five minutes and take a brain break. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is federal programs update. Ms. Cavado.
Good evening, everyone. I have a lot of slides, but I promise I did bullet points, so we'll move through quickly because federal programs can be quite lengthy and quite in-depth. But like I said, I pointed out the high points. So I'm going to go ahead and start out with Title I. Title I deals with our students who have been identified as economically deprived children in the district, and we receive funds for all of those students. And buildings qualify for those based on their number of free-reduced lunch students. For the upcoming school year, we have five buildings who met that criteria, and that was Merrimack Heights Elementary, Clyde Hammrich, Fox Elementary, Guffey, and Sherwood. Now, out of all of those schools, our next program talks about school-wide versus targeted. So school-wide programs, typically if their number is 40% or more free-reduced lunch, they are able to service their building school-wide with their funds, which means they can spend their funds on any building initiative that they have set forth in their plan. If they're a targeted program, that means their buildings have fell below that 40% economic deprivation. So for this upcoming school year, the next slide talks about all five of our buildings and where we're at for economic deprivation. So if you notice, all five buildings next year, we have earmarked for school-wide. What I did is I noticed that Guffey and Sherwood were kept tiptoeing that line, that we would go up to 40, and then we would drop to 36%, and we'd go to 38. So I went ahead and submitted letters for Guffey and Sherwood last year to go ahead and basically say to the state, we would like to be a school-wide building based on the fact that our numbers fluctuate so much and we have such a transient population. And so far, right now, we have been preliminary granted that all five buildings will be able to service school-wide. So where that is so nice is when COVID hit, I was extremely concerned that if we were targeted buildings, then the principals would still have to really watch where we placed our funds. And then this way, with those letters submitted, and now with COVID hit and, and different hits to our budgets, we can service all those buildings school-wide. So that, that's been a big win for us for the upcoming school year. So the next slide, I'm not going to discuss, but I included that in there for your information, where we're at as far as elementary, middle, and high school and district total. And those numbers are pulled from our January count in January 2020, where we're at as far as the district on economic deprivation counts. So when we talk about Title I, we talk about two subject or content areas, which are reading and math. For this school year, our reading teacher lead is Beth Griffin. She is a teacher at Merrimack Heights Elementary. We have 11 reading specialists in the district, which meet with me monthly. We've been meeting a lot more frequently since March, trying to figure out virtual learning, but typically, we meet monthly. Six of the 11 teachers are in the general education funding account, and five of those teachers are funded from the Title I account. And with that team, the staff, you know, we, we were, we really didn't know what our assessment would look like for dyslexia benchmarking when school started, and we are still held to the accountability deadline of the first 30 days of school. So the reading teachers and the reading specialist, or math specialist together, have been assessing kids grades one through three since unfortunately, the first day of school, not like we would want to do. No one wants to assess kids. But in order for us to meet the timeline, to get all the kids assessed, we have until October the 9th, and I can successfully say the teachers are almost done. And what they have done is with the kids that are virtual, we have made appointments, and parents have brought kids up on Wednesdays, and we have very few kids that we're probably going to have to assess virtually, because really in-person is the best way to assess those students. So kudos to the reading specialists, because that is all they've been doing since the start of school, and they're going to be able to start servicing students probably next week within their own buildings, because we've gotten through the assessment so quickly. So kudos to them. The next slide talks about their two SMART goals for the school year. Obviously, the, the number one is getting through virtual reading instructional support, what that's going to look like. And the staff have been meeting via Zoom with me since school closure in March and collaborating, figuring out what we're going to do, what that's going to look like. And we received the okay from Desi to go ahead and start our year with the kids we left off with from last year, because you elementary folks typically know the first couple of weeks, we assess, and that's how we determine who receives services. Well, we wanted to be smart about this in a healthy way, so with us starting with our kiddos that we left off with last year, the principals were able to group those kids in classes as much as possible. So whenever the teachers pull kids, we're not pulling from four or five teachers at one time, those kiddos are coming as much as possible from one, one teacher. So I cannot thank the elementary principals enough for doing that, because I know that was a special task. The second goal they wanted to go ahead and keep from last year is a continuation goal as far as looking at how we utilize all of our resources. My goodness, when I stepped into this role last year from being at the secondary level, I had no idea all of the reading things out there for elementary. So we've been funneling all of those together, and I'm really excited to say this whole group, we meet once a month, and they're collaborating, and they're using common resources and common instructional strategies. So now we can start having conversations when we're all back in person and doing benchmark assessments surrounded by the same delivery model for instruction. So that was a big win last year, but we're going to keep that goal, because we're not done with that. Title I math is very similar to reading, except with math, we just have five math specialists that service the five buildings for Title. Both the math and reading, like I said, they've been meeting and collaborating, and they're going to keep their students, like I said, right now, we're, they're meeting with their students that they left off with from last year, and they will start, I mean, we're going to have to start assessing those students probably within the next few weeks that the teachers start seeing their kiddos again. And they use the DIBELS or ACADIENCE assessments for those students for math. And they're going to, their goals mirror the reading goals, looking at data collection, and then also creating like a best practice math toolbox. We started this last year, but now they're adding the virtual side of instruction. And what's really neat is to see this math team come together, and they're coming up with folders of first-grade lessons, second-grade lessons, third-grade lessons, so everyone is working smarter and not harder. And not all those teachers are coming up with their own lessons. We're pulling out essentials and making, you know, toolboxes for each grade level. So I mean, to me, that just made sense, and the teachers are really, I mean, they're meeting every Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00, and it's, it's really neat to see all of these, all of these groups grow, grow into that model. The next slide just talks about all of our reentry plans for Title I reading, math, and ELL, so what that would, those services would look like. So that's at parents' fingertips, because I know there were a lot of questions when school started, how their kiddos would be pulled, and would they still receive services and things of that nature. So all parents were provided those plans as well. The next sector of Title I is non-public and private schools. So we have two schools in our district, Holy Child and St. John Lutheran, that I work with quite a bit now, because we service them with the CARES Act ESRS fund. So they received extra funding as well, and all of their planning and purchasing comes through our school district. So they met with me several times this summer via Zoom. They met with our finance department too via Zoom, and then now their purchases are all coming through, and all of those purchases are made through our district. So that's been quite, I want to say kudos to Ashley Thomas, because she's taken that on to where she's not only ordering for our other buildings, she's now doing orders for Holy Child and St. John Lutheran for quite amount, large amounts of money, because those are monies that are allocated, you know, through the federal government, but they're not able to do the ordering themselves. They all have to come through my office, get approved through my office, and then we have to have someone who purchases all of those materials for them too.
How is instruction delivered there now? Is it, does there, do they have like a school-wide program too? Do they kind of fall under the same category?
So there, they, we do service them through bypass. So what that means is that money is already pulled out from our Title I funds, and they're able to service, they hire their own people. So that has nothing to do with, with me through Title I.
So they can get their own people to do that work now?
Yes, because used to, we were not bypassed.
Yeah, you had to provide that service.
Correct, yeah. So, but we still meet and collaborate as far as where they can spend their Title II and Title IV funds. So they're able to spend funds for professional development and through Title IV for like social emotional learning.
I, I bet they love that, don't they?
You know, they do, and I absolutely, kudos to the principals from Holy Child and St. John Lutheran. I love our working relationship. We meet, well, this summer, I feel like we were like faculty, because we've been trying to figure out the CARES Act and ESRS funds, and their enrollment has grown, you know, so they're trying to embrace figuring all of that out, and they needed all the purchases for COVID, and we've gotten all their things for them as quickly as we can too, and efficiently. So I feel like that partnership, I, I do appreciate that partnership that we share with them. So that is what, end of Title I. Title II is pretty simple. That's our supplemental grant for professional development. So on top of the 1% funds, we receive Title II funds, and that is earmarked for professional learning. And most of those funds were covered over the summer for the Summer of Learning and all the virtual PD that we did. So Robyn Green and I meet every, well, spring, and then throughout the summer to determine what all she needs for her goals to be met through the Professional Development Committee. And we just met last week to determine, you know, what, what additional funds can be set aside for any additional learning for this school year. And that's on top of, like I said, the 1% funds. Title III is our next one, and that is for our ELL instruction. I am very proud to say this school year, we've even grown with our ELL kiddos. I think we've got about 25 more than what we had last year, so we're sitting at 241 students. And I love to hear the stories about our incoming kindergartners, because we have had an influx between Sherwood and Guffey, I mean, Guffey's always been our influx here lately, but Sherwood had an influx too, of little guys and girls coming in as ELLs. And what they do is, we assess our kindergartners, and then we allow them to be immersed the first semester, and then they're reassessed second semester, determine if they're going to need ELL services. So that number will probably be larger, because that's not including kiddos that will be, that will qualify in kindergarten. Okay? And we have six full-time ELL specialist staff, and I think Vicki can appreciate that, because we had like three back in the day. So that was nice that we have a staff to service those students. We also have Laura Flannery is our ELL department lead, and then I didn't mention earlier, Lori Bryfogle is our Title II department lead for math. She's at Fox Elementary. She's outstanding. And we also have a teacher's assistant that we pay out of Title III funds that helps the buildings, and this year, thank goodness, because we have her going to Sherwood now, and then Londell, and helping Marion Woods with Londell Simpson and Sherwood, because of the, the growth of those buildings. Two of the things I would like to brag on this team, we came up with a new C-6 service plan for ELLs, and that link is in there, and if you guys have the time to pull that up, it looks like to me a mini learning plan for our kids, and we took about eight different examples last year and piecemealed them together, and the staff will be able to, once we're done assessing all of our kids. every student will have a revised service plan and that service plan will be uploaded into Tyler. So if Jamie Cabado's teaching first grade and I get a new little ELL kiddo, I can pull up in Tyler their service plan and see where their learning goal is. Is it language? Is it writing? And what is the ELL teacher focusing on with that student? And those service plan goals are based on data. And the data comes from the access score and the access is like, to me, the map test for ELL kids. And we look at, we're now, this school year, digging into looking at the growth model. So if Jamie took it in first grade, then I took it in second grade and third grade, what areas is Jamie growing and what areas is she not growing? And what we found is sometimes maybe we're focusing on areas that we didn't need to spend as much time on. And then we're going to maybe narrow it down to two goals and it might just focus on language. So that's a big win from that group. I'm really proud of them. And then also, we're planning in the spring, steps towards the seal of biliteracy recognition. And I don't know if many of you guys know a lot about that, but the big picture of that is eventually baby steps, our kids could graduate with a recognition on their diploma for a seal of biliteracy. That's my goal. Okay, that's a big, that's a big goal. Because that involves working with the high school foreign language department. So for our little steps, what we're going to do this year is work with our elementary kids. And so if they're able to, it's like a little grid sheet, sing a song in both languages, English and Spanish. They're going to, you know, get a little recognition and we're going to have a recognition for the kids up here at the service center. And then we're also going to recognize our kids who graduate out of the program. Because one of our teachers brought up that, you know, one of the kiddos tested out of the program and it was like so emotional because she'd been with this child for like four years and, you know, and so now we've never really recognized those kids. So we're going to do that in the spring. That's our plans so far. And at the end, I included an ELL department brochure that they came up with as a team. Amela from Fox Elementary and Rockport Elementary. And they came up with it together along with the team. And now we can provide it to parents and we're going to provide it in our top four or five languages as well. All right, so I think the next slide, so we have 26 languages spoken in the district. I think last year we were at 21, so we added five. And some of the languages trying to find interpreters for are really starting to get challenging. So that's been quite a challenge this school year as well. But we are so excited to be able to do the recognition of the biliteracy for the little kids. And hopefully, whenever they get older, we're going to be able to knock it out for the high school. But that's going to take a little while. The last one that I work with is Title IV. And this budget supports well-rounded educational opportunities, safe and healthy students, and technology. So what we did, really, really proud of this group. Last year, Dr. Cardona and I met, Dr. Gilman and Mr. Fitzpatrick. We talked about what could we do for the social emotional side with our money? And we took the matching grant from Jeremy Donald with the $50,000 for the St. Louis counseling. And so his grant pays for the first 50, our Title IV pays for the second 50. And so now we're able to provide services all year round, not just a semester. And knock on wood, from what I can tell from the funds we receive every year for Title IV, I think we're going to be able to keep that constant to just always earmark that $50,000 aside for that. Luke Hyder was able to order Chromebooks over the summer with $18,000 for, to deploy, you know, during our shutdown and for virtual learning. And then we've also used monies for advanced placement corset materials and STEM work. Okay. Now here's, here is some eye-opening data that I'm going to share with you tonight with Title. Title I A McKinney Vento. So this is our Homeless Assistance Act to address the issues with homeless children and youth enrolling in school. I included a link in there because that is our Fox C6 enrollment survey. Every year, parents have to update enrollment forms, you know, for their child to start school. And then when we have new enrollees. A student who would qualify for homeless, I've listed there on the right-hand side. If they're in any situation where they're sharing housing, doubled up, economic hardship, emergency shelters, all things to where, you know, their life at home has changed significantly and they've had to move. If they identify yes to one of the five questions in the enrollment survey, we're required by the McKinney Vento law to investigate those responses to determine if that family qualifies for homeless assistance and tagging. So JP, if you'll go to, I think it's that data slide. So this is a back one, yep, back, there we go. Okay, so this is live data as of September the 8th. So when we started the school year, our number of homeless unaccompanied youth, we were at about 100 kids. So in August, myself and Gail Beck came in and started calling families to determine if they re-qualify. Because just because you qualify doesn't mean you're just tagged that forever and ever. You have to re-qualify each year. So of those 100, every single one of them re-qualified, okay? They were still in the same situation. We have also updated within the last week or so, that number has went up to 113. We also ran a list that I am not quite sure we've done in the past because it's quite eye-opening, number two there. So this is the amount of families that indicated a yes to one or more of the possible homeless questions. That is 689 students in our school district. So what we have done with that, myself and Gail Beck and Ashley Thomas meet and we've determined from reaching out, how are we going to do this? Because how do you call 700 people? Because they pull our numbers on our October 1st count. So at least from 689, we had reached out to 100 of them before school started, so now we're down to 589. Ms. Beck in our social work department has been calling religiously the last week and a half. 55 of our, what I call, red flag families. They've answered yes to at least two of the questions. So within a week's time, of those 55 families, 26 have qualified. 17 we still need to reach back out to, to determine their status. So the way I can look at it now is we're probably going to end just this week alone with at least 140. And that's where we ended the school year with last year and that is what we're starting the school year with this year. So with that being said, we figured today we have about 540 families after that that we will have to reach out to. And I've met with the counselors and Dr. Cardona and Dr. Gilman are on the team as well. As soon as we can get this list down as small as we can, we'll divide the next setup probably to the buildings. That will probably have to have the building counselor help us reach out. Because ideally, we really would like to have all of these tagged by October 1. I think we'll have a majority of them tagged. And tagging to me is, that's just one thing for the state. But, you know, whenever you have students tagged who are, who do meet the qualifications as McKinney Vento students, that's $400 per student that we receive in federal funding. Which with that being said, that is going to be money we are going to need because when we are all back in school, we are going to be transporting these kids. And last year, we transported, I think, about 55 kids. Right now, we're only transporting, that number's updated too. Right now, we're transporting 16 because most of them have chosen to do virtual learning. But like I said, once we're all back in session, those are going to be additional transportation services we're going to provide to kids on top of these other 500 families that we're not real sure about what's going on. To me, that gives, that opens your eyes to what our community is feeling right now as far as loss of jobs and doubling up with other families. That's pretty much the phone calls that Ms. Beck has taken. And I cannot appreciate her services enough. She is coming in early in the morning and leaving late at night and taking phone calls. And, you know, we're just trying to do what we can do because one family you may be on the phone with for an hour because their electric is being shut off or they're being evicted and have to move for the fifth time. I mean, we've had that within a week, you know, families moving three different places within a week's time. So like I said, those were live numbers as of Friday. But I really wanted you guys to be aware of, you know, the concerns that our community is facing and our schools and the building principals and counselors. I cannot thank them enough too for the support they provide. And I've included last year's data in there so you can like see where we ended the year with. And now we're starting, typically, we don't start the school year that high. We don't. And now, now this year, we are. The next slide talks about, let's see, just some of our celebrations from last year, some of the things that we did and our partnerships. The next slide is one of the things that I feel like you guys as a school board would really want to know about because I really didn't know a lot about this group until I came into this position. Once a month, we have a Jefferson County Community Resource Group of about 30 individuals that meet here in the service center with Gail Beck and then myself. And they are from organizations all over the county. And they are willing to just, every month, they talk about what services they provide, what they can do, how we can all network together. And this summer, we even went ahead and zoomed once a month. And I cannot tell you, we will put out an email, we put out an email today about a family in need and everything was taken care of and met by the time I left at 4 o'clock. I mean, I was just, just, I'm just set back by the awesomeness of our community and the 30 organizations that, when I was a principal, I had no idea all of this. You know, what was just a part of the community that had outreach, you know, for needy families. It's outstanding. So I want to thank that group because they're all listed there. Celebrations to end this with is over the summer, we had 20 staff members step up. And every week, on Mondays, we picked up food from the food service department and we delivered meals to 19 of our McKinney Vento families that did not have transportation. So we were driving all over Jefferson and St. Louis County delivering meals on Mondays. So that was a fantastic effort by our district personnel, principals, counselors, you name it, teachers. Another piece was the Axel Transportation Services. They're one of them that provides transportation, one of our three that provides transportation to our students. They gave us $50 grocery gift cards to give to those families. So not only like were we bringing them food, we were giving them $50 gift cards to Schnucks. And that was really nice of Axel to do. And then State Farm off Merrimack Bottom Road, they wanted to know what were our highest need families that were identified as McKinney Vento families? What did they need? And they made 18 care baskets. So it was filled through the whole conference room and we delivered those throughout the summer as well. And in closing, finally, 864 students have received services by the Fox School District from federally funded programs. So that's where we're at. Thank you, guys.
Do you have any questions?
Just one observation, you know, when you were showing, sharing your community partners. I'm amazed at how many groups out there that really aren't connected to the school district are there to help and support our kids. And we have always been blessed with many really active churches that help us with that. They're a very important part of our community and they need to understand that, and some of our businesses out there too, how much they're appreciated.
Absolutely.
I just want to thank you, Jamie, publicly for all of your work on this. I know when I look, if you were to look up lead learner in a dictionary, that would be you. So thank you for all of your work and just learning all of this. I know it was completely new for you and you've done a fabulous job. So thank you.
I feel like this year is like, it's so much, it's a refresher because it's like, okay, I've got my foot running. Especially when I ran that report with 700 families.
Yes, you've got this. And just so you know, Sophia packed up half an hour ago. She was almost in the car.
She's ready to go home. Look at her. She's giving me the look. All right, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 3.5 Prop P projects update. Mr. Stewart?
Yes, the document you have is the design milestones sheet. And it's got listed out for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 by project. And it kind of lists out the different milestones for each of those projects. As you look at that, I'm going to walk you through the latest progress report on where we are at. I'll start off in general and then I'll touch on each of the projects. So in general, the BRS design team, they're continuing to work, continuing field work, preparing drawing backgrounds and developing preliminary layouts for the schematic design phase of work. BRS members are meeting with Scott Barbagallo, myself and other district staff in a continuing series of weekly meetings to confirm scope and preliminary cost estimates for each of the projects. Meetings with school principals and staff have begun and will continue through the design development phase. Now in particular, talking about the Antonia Elementary addition, the geotechnical exploration work is complete. The boundary and topographical survey work is proceeding and field utility locations have occurred. BRS is refining the schematic plan based on a September 2nd meeting with the school principal and the assistant principal. And the next engagement for school staff is tentatively scheduled for late September or early October. In regards to the Merrimack Heights Elementary addition, geotechnical exploration work is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, September the 16th. And boundary and topographical survey work is proceeding. The first meeting with the school principal and assistant principal was on September the 2nd. And the next scheduled meeting is for tomorrow, Wednesday, September the 16th. Regarding the Fox High, there's going to be demolition utilities and in addition, so those will cross over Phase 1 and Phase 2. So in Phase 1, the scope of the utility work has been identified and the field utility locates have occurred. And the BRS team is working to analyze the existing conditions. They will work with the local utilities to continue to develop, to continue development as the design development phase proceeds and the budget has been established. As far as the addition, which would be in Phase 2, the geotechnical exploration work is complete for that and boundary and topographical survey work is proceeding and the field utility locations have occurred. Some of the other items that are projects that are more district-wide and touch multiple buildings are grouped together. So when we talk about flooring, paving, and kitchen equipment, they're going to touch multiple buildings. The scope of the flooring replacement and paving work has been identified, budgeted, and prioritized. Meeting, a meeting with the food service director is tentatively scheduled for September the 24th. That's next week on Thursday, I believe, at 10:00 a.m. at the Ridgewood Middle School. And budget for the kitchen equipment work has been established. When we start talking about the secured entrances that we want to have at each of the facilities, which includes cameras and access controls, preliminary solutions have been developed for all the, all security vestibules, camera locations, and access control expansion. Preliminary cost estimates are complete and meetings with the principals will be scheduled to review the designs. As far as science labs go, field documentation of existing science lab conditions is complete. Meetings with principals will be scheduled for initial planning and budgets have been established. As far as the elementaries go, playgrounds are, each facility is targeted for playground work. And so photo surveys and field documentation of existing playground conditions are complete. Preliminary meetings will be held with building principals. And at that time, a determination of stakeholder engagement will be decided and budgets have been established. And then the last piece is roofing and HVAC. And so currently, the roofing HVAC scope has been confirmed and preliminary design work is underway for the Secman High School Phase 4 and the Fox Elementary School Phase 2. So that is where we are at with the Project P projects or the Prop P projects at this point in time.
Mr. Stewart, can I ask a question about the timeline on that? I know, I remember, and my memory might not be real exact, but I recall that there's a timeline in which the bond money has to be utilized and I can't remember exactly what that is. Is there a...
Correct. So the bond issue was passed... So the bond issue was passed in June. We have not sold the bonds yet, and that's important because once you sell the bonds, you have three years to substantially spend all bond proceeds. So right now, we are targeting with our underwriter, our municipal advisor, to sell the bonds in the spring. And, you know, sometime after the first of the year, we'll start that process with a closing probably March-April timeframe to have the funds. And then projects can, breaking ground can occur, as you see, you know, on the milestones for design, you know, groundbreaking is in the May timeframe, May-June timeframe. So, oh, and one thing I did want to clarify on the milestones for design document there, and I've received at least one question about it, so I just want to clarify. So if you look there in the middle where it shows March, and there's a stripe that goes all the way down that says bid Phase One, and then right next to it is award contracts. That is not bidding all those projects together as one project. It would, we can bid the projects as the board wishes. We can bundle projects. We can do them individually. We can bundle the two elementary projects together if we wanted to, if we wanted to, and keep the high school separate just because they're different. If, we can bid them all separately, which might draw more interest from various contractors into that. So it will not be all put out as one large package unless that's what the board desires, but it'll be broken out and available to contractors around.
Does anybody have any questions about that aspect or any other aspect? I would like personally to make sure if those contracts are bid out, that there could be, it could be done in a way that would encourage more local contractors to bid, if at all possible, whatever strategy would help encourage people within the county to bid for them.
Right. So there are, I mean, there are specific, you know, rules in doing an RFP and bidding those things out. So you can't, while you can't necessarily target a specific audience, as I was just mentioning, if we, if we bid those individual projects out, you would be more likely to get smaller, contractors that are not large, like nationwide or, you know, larger regional type contractors that, you know, might not, they wouldn't necessarily bid on something that's a smaller project. They want, you know, large projects. So bidding those out individually at the appropriate levels, I think, would gain what you're looking for.
I see Arthur's back there. Looks like you're the architect. Congratulations. I guess that selection has been made by someone, and I know that you've got a good team. Can you tell us a little bit about your team and some of the projects that you've done, Arthur? That, about how many people that you have working for you? Because this is a pretty big project to do for one firm, and I'd like to just have, you know, we, I don't think anybody in this board was ever involved in interviewing architects. And I would just like to know a little bit about your firm.
Certainly. Can you everybody hear me? Is it okay if I take off my mask? Carolyn and I, it's Carolyn Grun, my partner. We began BRS in 2012. We're getting ready to begin our ninth year of work. That's a culmination of, if I add the years together, I'm going to, I'm going to be surprised, I'm sure, but about 30 years for each of us in the design, management, design, and construction of public K-12 facilities in the St. Louis and regional area in Missouri and Illinois. And that's our, that's our history. That's the majority of our career. We've worked for Fox now for three years. We've completed about $19 million worth of work for Fox School District in those three years. That work has included additions, renovations, utility work, flooring, maintenance, mechanical, roofing, many of the things that you find in this bond issue. In fact, the planning for this bond issue has not been just the last six months or the last year, it's been the last two years probably in the preparation of this and being ready to begin these projects. I will tell you that between Carolyn and I, over our careers, we've accomplished about half a billion dollars in construction volume in local K-12 public schools in the St. Louis region. And that's something we're very proud of. We're very successful at it. And like I say, it's our, it's our life, it's our career. And we have BRS, our firm. Of course, we grow every year. We do about $25 million a year in construction volume presently. This bond issue takes approximately, as Joan said, about three years to complete. We grow every single year. Presently, we've got four full-time folks, we've got three contract folks, and we have a variety of consultants that'll help us with these projects, including mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, fire protection, door hardware, structural engineering. Those are the consultants in the team that we have to help us complete projects for K-12 schools.
I know some of your, some of the people you have on your team have worked for other architects, too.
Absolutely.
And have quite a bit of experience. How much experience do you have on your team?
With the, the team that we have is unique in that we have all worked together in K-12 public projects for the last 10, 10 to 12 years together, and that's the benefit of the team we've assembled. Yes, you're correct in that we have brought architects from other firms that we've worked with in the past to be in our firm, and they've worked, like I say, the core team that's working on your projects has been working together for, at the, at the very least, 10 to 12 years.
I know you have one particular designer that actually did quite a bit of work on Fox High School, too. And I know there was a lot of existing conditions down there. Have you been able to utilize his expertise in that regard?
Absolutely. And Fox, you know, is prolific. You've been around for a long time. Many of our team members have worked on Fox schools. For example, you know, we did a lot of work at Segmond High School this summer with regard to mechanical work, and we had a lot of structural modifications to make. Our structural engineer that we use was the designer for Segmond High School. And so we have, you know, we have many members who have done quite a lot of work on Fox schools throughout their careers. All are veteran designers and have been around a long, long time doing this kind of work.
Well, I appreciate you giving us, sharing that with us. It's good for the board to kind of have some insight into their architect and the work that they've done, and I appreciate you taking the time to visit with us about it.
Certainly.
A question I have. Do we have a contract with BRS right now? And is that for all the design work on all the plans we're looking, or all the renovations we're looking at?
Yes, we do.
So I can address that.
And we did get a bid, another bid?
Yes.
Okay. I just want people to know that there was a process involved.
Dan, this was for this scope of work, correct?
Absolutely, John.
So that when they, when the architect was selected, back in, when were you selected?
We were selected in late 2016, early 2017.
Yes.
Okay. So this, these projects didn't exist at that time?
Correct.
So how do we, how do we do a contract for something that didn't even exist?
So let me go ahead and explain that, John. Do you want to go through the contract? Because we added all that information. Go ahead.
So back in late 2016, the district went through an RFQ process, which is what you do for architectural services. And they, I think there were six maybe firms that submitted a, their qualifications. Three firms were selected, and those three firms were interviewed by the board, and they went through, and they selected, you know, those top three firms, and they rated them. I will actually tell you that BRS here was number two. And so the way the RFQ process works is after you select your, your desired firm, then you start negotiating fees. So in the RFQ process, it's different than the RFP process in that you cannot ask for fees upfront in the RFQ process. So whenever they started negotiating with the first selected firm, the fees that they proposed were 8.2% and were considered too high, and they weren't getting back down on it. So they dismissed the firm. And so then they started talking with BRS. And BRS was selected because of their qualifications. You know, they were already number two, and their fees were reasonable. And so that RFQ that was issued in late 2016, section number three, that was the scope of services and performance requirements specifically for, for this, was in the near term, various facility alterations as needed to accommodate moving sixth-grade students to the middle schools. In the longer term, numerous facility needs are anticipated. And so after the sixth-grade transition, BRS started working on, on the projects that were going to be part of Prop S. And so they were, they continued that work with that. And as you all are aware, Prop S did not pass. And so that list was pared down from the $70 million list of projects to the current $40 million list of projects, which is a subset of the original $70 million worth of projects. So the, so the language was open-ended in the RFQ whenever it was issued.
I just want everybody to know that I have full confidence in BRS. They're able to accomplish this. I know some of the people that work for them personally, and I have full confidence. I am a little disappointed in the process. This board had no involvement in identifying the architects for this particular project, although I know he was selected to do some projects back in 16 and 17. These are new projects. And I think the board expressed an interest. I would have liked to have had a presentation by BRS because I would like to know what kind of firm they are, and I'm glad that he was able to provide that information for me. But I'm disappointed in the process, and I don't think that process was very fair to this community.
I just have a question. Are the fees still the same from 2017?
Yes.
And Mr. Stewart, Dr. Patel, I was thinking that as we move forward with this, it might be good to have just kind of a standing agenda item to be updated on the propositions as we go through to keep the community informed and the board, and that would be a great process.
Yeah, that's why I, that's why I had it.
To other board members, I've been a pain to John over the last several days because I have lots of questions about the projects and the phases and the architects, and he's very knowledgeable, very willing to help you. And my goal is just to make sure we're open to the public about how we're spending money and that we've had a process, and we know what that process is and the cost. And so if you have questions, John is the guy to go to, or maybe he's going to pass it along to his new help.
I would like to say that I remember sitting in the audience the last several years and seeing all the presentations by the, the people that were in the design process. So I've seen, I felt like we've seen this process, and it's very, it's been very transparent. So I'm supportive of it.
Yeah.
Let me respond to that. Typically, the board that's responsible for placing an issue on the ballot and getting that issue passed typically is involved in the process of identifying the, and again, could very well have been BRS anyway. Matter of fact, I'm certain it would have been for many of the projects, for sure. But courtesy to the Board of Education that goes, puts an issue on the ballot, gets it passed, the very least that they should be involved in is identifying the architects that are going to be involved in doing those projects.
Okay. On the agenda is 4.1, setting the tax rate. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. So we held our tax rate hearing at 6:30 p.m. this evening. You all were present for it. You saw the presentation that we are required to, as a school district in the state of Missouri, to set our tax rate and deliver that to the county prior to, honor before October the 1st. You will, if you recall from the presentation, my recommendation is going to be to set the property, the 2020 property tax rates as follows. $0.6200 in the capital funds project, $3.4970 in the incidental fund, and $0.3901 in the debt service fund. Those are all dollars per $100 of assessed valuation. So the total property tax rate for the Fox School District would be $4.5071 per $100 of assessed valuation.
Okay, this is an action item? Can I get a motion?
So move.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Mr. Stewart, you're up a lot tonight. The next item is 4.2, a resolution authorizing the issuance of taxable tax and revenue anticipation note in the amount, in the principal amount not to exceed $10 million.
As we have talked about for the last few months, due to cuts in the state funding of over $6 million, Fox C6 needs to secure short-term borrowing in the form of tax anticipation note, otherwise known as a TAN, to ensure that the district can meet its financial obligations this fall. The district will only draw the amounts needed for cash flow purposes, not necessarily the total amount available. Once the district starts receiving property tax revenues in December, the TAN will be paid back. Interest will accrue on the outstanding balance of the TAN at a rate equal to the three-month U.S.T. bill rate plus 1.40%. And I got an update on that today. Currently, that's 1.5%, and that's going to be the intended interest rate on this tax anticipation note. At any point, it will not exceed 2%, and it will be paid monthly. So attached for your consideration is the official resolution, the tax anticipation note, and the loan agreement. And I do have, here in person, we have Sean Flynn with the firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell, who is our bond attorney, who drew up the agreements. And then we also have virtually via Zoom, Mr. John Welding, who's the Senior Vice President of Public Finance with UMB. UMB is our depository bank, and that is who we are working with in order to secure the tax anticipation note.
Any questions for Mr. Stewart or... I just wondered if anybody had any questions before we made a motion on this. It's kind of a, a big deal. We've never had to do this before. So before I asked for a motion, I thought if you have questions of either the gentleman or Mr. Stewart, that'd be fine. Sorry, I've already forgotten their names.
Mr. Flynn and Mr. Welding. Wendling, sorry.
Okay, finance guys, Mr. Grunwall, Mr. Schlue, this is your chance to ask.
One last clarification on the actual construction projects that are going to be designed by the architect. Yeah. Oh, okay. I didn't, good. Yeah, I usually call him. No.
I guess you need a motion for that. So move.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is 4.3, budget adjusted. Mr. Stewart.
So you have before you the, a document that shows the various revenue expenditure budgets that are being adjusted. The majority of these changes are due to updated funding allocations from DESI in regards to title funding and the like since the original budget was adopted in June. So overall, revenues are increasing by almost $1.8 million, and expenditures are also increasing by just under a million. There is also a reallocation of some budgeted expenditure dollars between funds of just a... of some budgeted expenditure dollars between funds of just under $200,000, and that is to comply with regulations and policies as far as what expenditures come out of which funds. So after this adjustment, our projected operating fund balance at the end of the year will be 12.53%, which is 2.55% higher than the original budget that was approved in June. So that's making progress in the right direction. So I would appreciate, well, I'll answer any questions, but I would need approval of the board to apply these budget adjustments.
Are there any questions before we, I ask for a motion for Mr. Stewart on the budget adjustment. Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor? Yes. You need to speak, people.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is Johnson Controls Agreement.
So you have before you a proposal by Johnson Controls. The Fox School District has had Johnson Controls Energy Management in place for almost two decades. We have eight buildings with Johnson Controls Energy Management system. From this system, we can change fresh air intake amounts. That's huge at this point in time with the pandemic that's going on. So we can adjust those and increase those as needed. We can set occupied and unoccupied times in buildings and change temperature settings, all which result in better air quality and energy savings. The current system that we have hasn't been upgraded in over eight years, and the hardware, server hardware that services that is older than that. So our folks will be able to, with the newest, they'll be able to shorten the troubleshooting and short, which will shorten, break, shorten the time of breakdowns and failures and downtimes. And so also, just so you're aware, Johnson Controls Energy Management system is a proprietary piece of technology. And so Johnson Controls is the sole source provider for that. The upgrade, to complete this upgrade for all seven, or seven, eight buildings, yeah, all eight buildings, is $71,255 plus any applicable taxes. That is a discount of over $40,000, and that discount's available until November 1. Ultimately, we're hoping that this will not cost the district a penny, because we are going to submit this expenditure to Jefferson County to be reimbursed through the CARES Act funds because of the fresh air exchange and intake that will be increased and improved and will help in these eight buildings.
Question, Paul.
Is this included as part of the projects in the schools, or is this a separate entity that will be tacked on, these control systems?
So as, as far as the budget is concerned, or?
Yeah, in the total cost of all the projects.
This isn't part of Prop P? This is not part of Prop P.
No.
This is just a regular?
No, this is, this is outside of Prop P and would be occurring out of the normal buildings and grounds maintenance in the Capital Projects Fund.
What about the buildings that aren't part of this?
So Mr. Barbara Gallo's here, but I do know, and correct me, and you can chime in all you want, Scott, some of our other buildings that have other hardware as far as HVAC units, they use the proprietary system that comes with that, with that equipment. So you can expand on that, Scott.
We have two other energy management systems in the district. The other ones are Allerton, and another one is called Silverlight. They operate the units, occupied times, fresh air amounts, things like that. There are several buildings that don't have anything like that. Some are just standalone, and what you set the units for, that's what you get. Some don't have any fresh air. That's our older buildings with systems that are 25 and 30 years old.
Do we have any plans to look at those buildings to?
Yes.
Because I know that was on the survey, that was one of the teachers, that was one of the questions on the NEA survey, was do you have capability of your temperature in your room or something like that?
So I guess that's kind of like a, depends on the building. As many as we have in the age of the systems, I guess it's kind of a different answer for each one.
I see Antonia Elementary, which, which, that's, that's one of the older ones.
Yes. So currently, Antonia Elementary, through majority of that building, use what we would call a residential split system, just like your furnace at home and your air conditioner outside. It's the same exact system. In the corner of every room, you have a little walled-in area. That's where the air handler sits. Up on the roof is the condensing unit. Those units do not bring in fresh air, as well as like controlling temperature. They all control their own individual temperature in those areas. But again, some of those units are 25 and 30 years old or somewhere in that neighborhood. So times, times is difficult to keep them all running.
Well, anything to put fresh air in the learning environment for our kids is a good thing. So do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, I have a question. Scott, on those older systems, do we have special HEPA filters or anything like that that can help?
So all of our furnaces, we use a Mervate filter, which filters out particles all the way down to, I want to say it's like four microns, which the coronavirus, I've heard several different things, how small it can be, how large it can be. But a Mervate filter is similar to what they use in a hospital. Now, these aren't the same filters they'd use in a clean room, but for their general areas in a hospital, it's the same quality.
So how often do you have to change those filters out, too?
We typically do them every 60 days. So they're a two-inch filter in most every unit we have. And for every one-inch thickness of the filter, they're good for 30 days as just a general rule. Some do have to be changed more often because they run more often, but.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I know that some of the schools have humidity problems. And here, where it talks about setting occupied and unoccupied times, I know that in the summer, when the students aren't in the building, the desk will have water setting on them.
So the issue we run into in the summertime is there's not enough people in the building. So when they size the air conditioners and the heating systems, they're intended for when people are there, like especially now where we went out in March, up until we finally came back. And even now, we're only at 40% of the kids in a room, roughly.
So how do they adjust for that?
There's still a little bit of difficulty with it. It's way better than nobody, but they don't run quite long enough. They cool the air, but they don't dehumidify because they don't quite run long enough at times.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, can I get a motion on this?
So move.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Payment of bills.
Yes, so you have in front of you Group A bills presented for your review and approval.
Can I get a motion, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Financial report, Mr. Stewart.
Yes, so you have the financial report for the first two months of the fiscal year. And also, there's the graph that tracks the operating fund balances. I will let you know that through two months, our actual revenue is about $9.7 million, or seven and a half percent of our budget of $130 million. And our expenditures are at about $11.8 million of our, of our budget of $132.4 million, or about 8.9%. So we are on target. If you look at the graph, the gray line, if you look at July and August, so the gray line all to, all the way to the right, the darker kind of charcoal line in each of those groupings, that is the current year of 2021. And if you will notice, as compared to last year anyway, that, that gap is less in the month of August than it was in the month of July. And I will tell you that probably the main reason for that is, as we mentioned, or as we discussed earlier with the state funding, with the, the cut from the state was all absorbed in the month of July, or the vast majority of it, I should say, was absorbed in the month of July. So that's why you see that big dip there. But it's not as big in August. So hopefully, if the economy continues to improve, we can see that charcoal line trending closer and closer to the red and, and hopefully surpass that and blow the doors off last year. So.
So it looks to me like there's still a chance that we won't have to actually borrow money.
Is there a chance?
Chance, chance.
Yes, there is a chance. There is a chance. However, I would suggest that, you know, we are $300,000, our, our June 30th fund balances were $300,000 below last year's fund balances. And that was before the $3 million, $3 million hit this year in state funding. And it also depends, you know, we've got these projects just got finished up for the summer work at, at Sekman High and at Fox Elementary, and some other minor stuff going on. But, you know, those final bills will be coming in, which will also put a hit on, on those reserves. And then it also, funded out of all of this is also our self-funded insurance plan, which I will share with you, is at this point trending well. So, but, you know, that, that can change in a heartbeat. So.
John, you need to understand that for some of us, it's been here for a long time. We're kind of making history by doing this.
I understand.
We've never had to do this. And it goes, so this is kind of a big deal for us.
Yep.
And it's something that we've always tried to avoid, and we worked hard to do that. And circumstances are a little different these days, for sure.
Yes.
And going ahead and, and, you know, preparing for that need is a smart thing to do. There's no question about it. It should be wonderful if we wouldn't have to use it, though.
Absolutely. Agreed. Any questions?
Moving on to the next item, which is Employee Assistance Program. Mr. Gilman, Dr. Gilman.
Yes, we're asking for a motion to approve our Employee Assistance Plus program at a cost of $18,050. And this provides our students and family members of Fox E6 with a professional counseling resource. This is what we use every year.
I make a motion. Second.
Any questions? If not, hearing none. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right, the next item, Mr. Dr. Gilman again, the Head Start Program Renewal with Jefferson Franklin Community Action Corporation.
Yes, this is a yearly agreement, and it's basically up to us if we want to continue with this. We provide the space for the preschool program for Head Start, and they provide the staff and students. This is a free program to students who qualify. So we're asking that you approve this agreement.
Any questions?
I have one. Do you know when they're going to start attending school?
Yes, I think they were looking at October, like, to get it going.
All in favor?
Yes.
The next item, credit card authorization.
So as you all are aware, the district uses credit cards for purchasing various items, and we are requesting approval for a Visa credit card for Kayla Shrimph, who is our Assistant Director of Food Service, new to the district. And we're asking for a credit limit of $1,000. And per policy DJF, this requires board approval.
Okay, can I get a motion, please? All in favor? Yes. Next item, 6.4, building external wireless. Mr. Stewart.
So there is, through the CARES Act in the state of Missouri, some funds that are available through DESI. Specifically, there's a Missouri Student Connectivity Grant that makes available to us a certain amount of dollars per building to install wireless connectivity at all of our buildings. Part of that grant requires that there's a 50% match. Now, we can take that 50% match and use, and apply some more of our Jefferson County CARES Act funding towards that. So the proposal that you have in front of you from Provision Data Solutions will provide and install this equipment in all of our school buildings at a cost of $47,997. Upon successful submission to both those grants, the end cost to the district will be $0. So this equipment will be purchased through the NASPO, National Contract. So we are seeking approval from the board for this purchase.
I make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any questions? So basically, this is a reimbursement. Is that, that's how it'll work?
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is a memorandum of understanding with the University of Central Missouri, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
In order to place student teachers in our classrooms, we must have a memorandum of understanding, an MOU enacted between the district and the university. The attached MOU has been reviewed by legal counsel, and we're asking the board to approve it.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, Employee Modification Group A. Dr. Brock.
We are requesting the board's approval for the attached employment modification. Ms. Smith would want to abstain from this.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Brock, again, stipends, I guess we have to do each one of these separately. Stipends, Group A.
We are requesting approval for the attached stipend, and Ms. Chamberlain would want to abstain.
Okay, can I get a motion, please? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, stipends, Group B.
We are requesting approval for the attached stipend, and Mr. Grunwald would want to abstain.
Can I get a motion, please?
First.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right, stipends, Group C.
We are requesting approval for the attached stipend, and Ms. Hanson, you should abstain. We're requesting that the board accept the attached policy revisions for a first reading. We would bring these for a second reading and adoption at our October 20th meeting. The majority of these changes are recommended due to changes in law, and each policy has a cover sheet explaining what the change is and the rationale for it.
Okay, and so I would ask the board, please do your homework and review these policies. And if you do have questions, email Dr. Brock and Dr. Patel so that they can respond to your questions, and we can prepare to consider their adoption or revision at the next meeting. Next item is 8.1, consent agenda items, 8.1. Oh, we need a motion. I'm sorry. No, we don't. We don't need a motion. It's for information. It's our first reading.
No, it should still be an action to, to accept them.
Oh.
For the first reading.
Thought it was, since it was information, we didn't have to make a motion. I'm sorry. We still need a motion. Is that correct? Oh, sorry. My mistake. We still need a motion.
It states that we're requesting for the first reading, if they were for the first.
That we accept them for a first reading. Okay. I guess that's how it said. I guess that's how we should say it, is if you make the motion, say, I make the motion to approve them for a first reading, to accept them for a first reading.
I make a motion to approve them for the, the first reading.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
So again, that's not approving, it's just accepting them. The next one is consent agenda items 8.2 through 8.6. Dr. Brock.
We are requesting the board's approval for all attached hires, stipends, modifications.
Can I get a second, please? All in favor? Yes. All right, the favorite part of the meeting, need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.